Have invocations. Most gracious heavenly Father, you give another thanks for another day, God, that you give us a chance to come to this town and try to work for the betterment of it. But I pray that you reach down and touch each impression here, bless the Lord and heaven on the way back home and just help us to do the right thing. Rest in peace.
Amen.
Mary Collins.
I'm here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Wardley.
Here. The next approval of bench from October 3rd, everybody got a chance to look over. I don't even know if I see it yet. I didn't have a holdout there. Make a motion to approve. Good, second. I'll say it. Roll call.
Mary Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. Next, the folks from the board, anybody have anything to report?
The only thing I got, I guess, you know, from the OISLE, we talked about flying up to a couple hundred dollars worth of lights and stuff for the little friendship barn in Rodney was there decorated with and stuff, so I got that forms, I could get that in. You did get to put some of them on the bill?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you.
And ended up ordered it through Amazon. They come in like week before, my boy. So they decorated it up a little more. They were very appreciative and they said, "Thank y'all." So it's like...
This light, definitely.
These lights and then a little place, orange and purple lights, and then they give me a list of what they wanted or their wish list. Then I got some, a couple of hanging fixtures. I go, those, a couple of those, had some lights in them and some stuff. Great paper.
I didn't see it. I didn't get a picture. But it looked okay.
Yeah, they're gonna get you all over there.
Did anything happen? Can't remember last night.
No.
Who me neither, so that's why I started writing this. We're like talking about the Halloween, it went, went well. Lucky fire department worked with us and controlled traffic, stopped, I mean, yeah. And there was a good crowd. I mean, I don't know how many were there, but it town was full, but I was glad everybody was safe and made it home and didn't hear any complaints whatsoever, so everything went good. Only thing that was sort of messy was Geraldine sitting over here on the corner, but they run ahead and give out counting down what she liked to do, so, yeah, I think they counted three hundred, a little over three hundred kids at about their house. So I'd say it was easy, that many or maybe more. Then, got the email yesterday, and I meant forty, no, two, because we got our million-dollar grant from community block developer.
I got it. And you sent it to me?
I couldn't remember, forty or not.
And then Ken Archer sent me one that I rented off.
That's good, but that'll be for the water lines to finish up down the other side of town. And that's for, basically, it's through the city, but it's for the utility district. Hopefully, that'll work. I'd be glad to get it done, anyway. Then we got, was finally able to get the name changed on the hospital last year, and all that, got them renewed for another two years, just, just to keep it back. You got it?
Yeah, but that's the original.
So, oh, that's good, there, it's there. And I don't know if this being now, but a while back, I guess when ambulance service moved over and they've got their contract renewed and stuff, but, you know, up here, they had that little car port, they parked their ambulances over, and it got cold and anything, didn't have to go back to frost. And I didn't think till here, the first frost we had, but they was, we were talking about it, but David, if we can do it, and we've got the money in the hospital account, maybe put them, like when he's opening carports, just to back a couple of them with ambulance under. Trying to figure out where we want to put them is a different story.
That's what I started saying.
Yeah, but somewhere like that, you know, I told him, I said, "I don't have a problem, but if we can..."
Well, I don't have a problem with them.
Trying to figure it out.
Buying it and putting it up.
Well, it'd be ours, so whoever, if they don't get, they got through your contract, I think, so they're gonna be here. Yeah, so, you know, I don't know. Just tell them, look, see what's happening. Well, you'd be surprised.
Yeah, but I mean, what are we gonna do with it after the contract's over?
Really, I mean, but using EMS, you know, if you lift your stuff out.
No, I agree, they need it, but I mean, I think that's something they, they ought to pay for themselves. If you're looking at three, five thousand dollars probably.
No, I might.
Three, five.
No, you'd get one cheaper than that. We're not gonna give her that extra, they're about eighteen hundred dollars for the twenty by twenty now. Of course, you just have to have it up taller, so they can get down with it, but anyway.
We're talking about whatever.
Yeah, but, and I hadn't talked, they might be willing to do that, I don't know. It was just me and David talking, you know, to, they'd had that problem, they actually run heaters inside the ambulances electric, just to keep them warmed up, so they don't do that, but...
Well, you have to.
Yeah, so, but anyway, I just, another thing on my mind there, just, I think it's figured out. Oh, I know there's a lot of other stuff that happened now. Put that there, the other one, I can't remember. Anyway, so we don't have any old business. Move on to view your business. Yes, you see, you got, oh, this one, one or two from...
I, I tried to get, yes, one of the South Patriot trailers from Lurkey Highway, but I tried to get three other places, called and asking for quotes, and I never received one. JJ, JJ over next to, I guess it's considered Charleston, South Charleston, Ryswell. Then there's another one, Hill Chris Trailers, called, left them several messages, it's during Sweetwater.
Yeah, I think I think, during Cleveland, I go by, but what I've seen them, and I'm sure they can get whatever, all up, see a lot of pick well, for the big stuff.
A lot of, lot of them are.
Which would be good, I think that feels easier to pull it, isn't it? Somewhat, but...
Yeah, well, it is.
We'd have to do something with their, one of the trucks to do that, but anyway.
Well, the four-fifties wouldn't need to pull it, anyway.
Okay, but anyway.
And this one, basically, it's a sixteen thousand gross weight.
That carry the Dozer? Will that carry the Dozer, Mike?
It should.
Okay, that's what I just, you know, that's what we want to make sure we end up carrying the tractor and the, and the little tractor.
I know the Dozer's thirteen-five, so, or the tractor.
The, oh, the little. Yeah, I don't know what that tractor weighs. Jack went and picked it up, put it up there, so...
It probably wouldn't handle that tractor.
This trailer won't?
I doubt it.
Well, I mean, I don't know. You'd think if it handled a Dozer, it doesn't handle that tractor.
Yeah, but the Dozer, the way you load it, and the way that tractor's wide as it is, that tractor's wider than a Dozer.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a...
In the oldest time we've ever had to move it, tractor, when we had it, worked on it one time, then this last time, once y'all came up here, so we didn't have to move it much.
I mean, it's a, it's a fair price for, for what it is, but I know with all the, like I said, with probably the Dozer, you may be able to get it on there, but the excavators and anything I was looking for when I did it. But I still, Mike, earlier, I mean, I, I know there's some prices out there, it seems like a little bit higher than...
Say, what, seven foot wide and twenty-two foot long?
Yeah. There is a...
That wasn't enough for the Dozer. Okay, that's what I keep in mind, though.
That might be over a little bit.
We won't, we won't be moving that thing to California, but anyway.
By the way, I was gonna say, there's a, actually, Joey Martin auction, it's in Cove, South Carolina, they open around, they do the winter, I watched them, but they've got several on there of the bigger ones, that it was wanted to try to bid on one of those, we could do that. They're a heavier duty, or, you know, it's actually true equipment trailers.
Sure, they do have wheels.
Yeah, they're dual wheels, seven, seven thousand round axles, a couple of little dual wheels.
So he does tell, so has he got the racks with it?
Yes, got the racks.
Yeah.
I mean, this has got everything it needs.
Are you sure it's not eight foot wide?
I told him eight, that's what it asked him, but did you see anything?
I was gonna say, here's a seven by twenty-two, fourteen thousand.
Yeah, so it's fifty-seven.
No, it's eight.
Eighty-four inches. Probably wouldn't need an eight foot one, would it?
Eight foot wide, eight foot, probably for sure, that Donner tractor, all that, really.
Yeah. I, what I'd like to do, maybe, is look at, like I said, that auction, I think, if, because we could set up and bid on it, we might be able to get a bargain. They do have, you know, y'all, a way of thinking about a used one. I mean, they got some new and some used on there.
Usually, when they save money, or we're using that, it'll be plenty.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if y'all wanted to approve up to a certain amount to get one or whatever, I would care to go in there and try to bid or call. What we can do with only it. That might be a cheaper way of getting them.
I'd pray it's ten thousand, then if you don't have to use it, whatever you get it for.
Yeah, try to go as cheap as I can, well, it'd be better to seventy-five hundred, or seventy-four.
I'd go up before that, because you don't have to spend it all, but you wanna make sure you get enough, something did come up. Found a good break, you get seventy-five, we didn't have to come back and read it.
Well, I mean, the auctions on that is Saturday, is when it closes, and I'll look before we come down, this, one of them's got a bid at like twenty-three hundred dollars. They, several of them don't even have a bid on them.
Of course, worst case, you have to put tires on them or something.
Yeah, well, a good bet of them, they're brand new. And some of them are, at least, just new, there's such a Delta trailer, I don't know where they're made out, but they look like they're heavy duty with a panel hitch.
If you could find one with a dual rack, so we do a wheel, then it wouldn't have to weigh about the weight.
Yeah, and there's, there's a couple of them on there that, that had that. And then the other side is, you want one, it has to be eight foot, or it has to be no fenders, if you were gonna do the Dozer.
Well, if you get eight foot, it's gonna be over the top, bed's gonna be over the top if you do a wheel.
Yeah.
So you won't, won't be under, over the penders, nothing, then it'll just be, the bed'll be eight foot.
Yeah, the other bed's eight foot.
Tires is under.
Exactly, yeah, 'cause with the seven foot, if you've got rails or fenders, then that Dozer...
You really need that.
Probably wouldn't fit.
We need it open, Saturday.
Yeah.
It's like, if the flat...
If you get the eight foot with the dual wheels, it'll be open, it'll be... What do you think, you think?
I mean, I, I mean, I think ten would be more than enough. Honestly, I think you should be able to get it for five or less. I'd hope...
Hope to put ten thousand there, if we get it cheaper, that's even better, but at minimum, that, just so we can have it without having to go through all the process.
Yes, because I mean, I'll, I'll get you to have...
Because even then...
...the seventy accounts and stuff, it'll last for a minute.
Look around, you find two or three more from where, hey, you can call around, might be even more, if I think of it. Tomorrow, but like I said, all I've seen in that lot has been fifter, but that don't mean it can't order. And I don't figure, I keep them, who makes her that big catch, going down there, buying a little sale of lot on.
If you hit well, that made a trailer come with it, fill it instead of the bomb.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna try to eat, because we've got, actually, we've got a panel slip in up here. Yeah, we got the, the receivers, I think it's a two-inch receiver, two five-sixteens, it's already on the truck, but, you know, but I think we do already have the panel hitch, you know, it slides in.
That's what you need, I mean.
Yeah, well, yeah, 'cause you wouldn't want a bomb, or when the heels come off.
Not on that beam.
No.
Anyway, I hear a motion to, just that ten thousand dollars toward a trailer, I'll make money.
I'll say.
Mary Collins.
Yep.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. Next, we do our, Dr. Phatley's, is this it?
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that's it.
He called me earlier, and they still, we're not really interested in selling the building. I said, "I really, I haven't talked about it," I said, "We, the year's coming up, there's been so much going on, we didn't..." But he said, "If we do, that's wonderful, if we need to do this for another year," he's fine with that, too, so... Did we, go up on this, ran on this one, we're gonna leave it till the same?
I thought we had it on an escalation, didn't we?
I thought we did, it still looks like it's damn fine. But he keep telling me, "Sam, if we sell that thing, get it on tax, or we can get some money," and I said, "But I could make more money off rent, if we will taxes."
Yeah.
I mean, really? He's like, "Yeah, yeah." So I don't know.
Okay, I see, so...
Matter of fact, I think this is somebody else interested in it, so I figure, I mean, I don't know, you know, didn't talk to him a whole lot, but, but anyway, I'm figuring knowing Doug, he probably...
Yeah, there's kind of a...
I don't know, you know, but anyway, so, he said he would be fine with this for another, whatever we want to do, so, I mean, we'll go ahead and prove it for this, or there, if you want to do that.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve law lease document, but resolution two oh seven.
No, no, this is just...
This is just it.
That's just yes. You for one year, correct?
Yeah, we've been here a year. Of course, we started first December. What was the other?
November, November first.
Okay.
Consistent next, seven, so we're just a few, like, days behind.
All right, so just keep it to November, all right. These others will probably, if it works out, if not December, it may be January first, but we'll do all these on the same, hopefully. I ain't worried about, not really worried about that, I mean, hey, put it out there if you want it, don't say it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mary Collins.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. Okay, so this first one, on the resolutions, two oh seven, this is, I guess, we got the names, okay, this one actually is for Dr. Sadek.
Yes.
The revised commercial lease, which we've been leasing the buildings over here at the hospital, anyways, so, when the county, when the city bought it from the county, this is just setting up the lease, basically, right now, it'll be in the city's name solely, right?
Yes.
So that's what we're trying to do, if everybody has a grivel on it, but, I hear a motion to accept resolution two oh seven, and there probably, well, there is a copy of the great lease, so, and we may want to look through them, but if we went back and tried to make them all the same, you know, we had to do some changes, I think, on Sadek, but when we did, we just had him change it, everybody's the same, that way one look, see...
Right.
Oh, this is, yeah, so, they all should be the same. I don't know what, we did vote to put, raise a price, so...
Yeah, Sadek and the ambulance is fifteen hundred, and then Eric's is just a little bit lower.
Seven feet.
Yes, seven feet, about that.
Yes, seven and a half.
Yep, so, all of that's in there.
I hear a motion for resolution two oh seven, should I done call for that? For Dr. Sadek's station.
Yeah, I'll make a motion two oh seven.
You're saying, second? Okay. Roll call.
Mary Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. Okay, next one, resolution two oh eight, this was a, a mayor approach EMS, we sort of held back on all these, just waiting on them to see if, who was gonna get the contract, they asked to do that, and they'd been paying right along with just what we was doing before, so... This, I think, they said they got a three-year deal?
Yeah.
I believe with the county or something like that, so, so they should be good, I think we'll do this year to year, shouldn't be a problem with them. They just said, basically, we'll get everything done, they get everything, just let them know, send it to David, or they'll come up, sign it or something, and, you know, have a problem with these folks, I think, just gonna be good. Another good thing, the leak, roof didn't leak through all the storms, so we hopefully got that fixed on that part of the building. Finding out that what's coming in on Eric's down on the downstairs is actually blowing through under the door.
Really?
Yeah, so, need to do a little grind, do something there, and that's just like, we get this trailer, if we have to, we'll go where that little track come dig out them floor beds and get everything falling away from the building, 'cause I think that's for a while that builds up. But I hear a motion for resolution two oh eight with the mayor approach, got about said AMO.
I'm ready to move.
I'll say it.
All right. Roll call.
Mary Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. Resolution two oh nine, this is Dr. Sadek, he was part of Unit D downstairs, and I think he's, he's still gonna be there, but told him he's gonna be putting on Friday? Saturday? Said he gonna start working ER somewhere, I'm sure he's had that.
So he's buzzing one day a week.
Yeah, one or two, or whatever, then maybe Thursday, but anyway, so, doing what he can do to keep something, but he's gonna make some money, too, somehow, I guess. But anyway, he's, I think he's good with it, hadn't talked to him in a while, but, is he paying, been paying?
Yes.
So, that's a good thing. All right, but anyway, resolution two oh nine, I hear a motion to accept it, lease for Dr. Sadek.
I'll make a move.
You're saying, all right.
Mary Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Commissioner Wardley.
Yes. And the other building, I still, I thought it was dead, but then I heard it, not my face, so, so we're, they hadn't come, but this folks did, so...
The previous...
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, which is, I don't remember how, just about to cover all the... Just to say, you know, if they don't, then we'll... All right, let's ease on down here and go to the announcements, it will be closed November eleventh, so trash pickup won't be there Tuesday, November the twelfth, November nineteenth, if everything didn't, we need to, we'll do a house board meeting. Plan the commission, we didn't have one last month, didn't have many, or something.
And then they're training, you know, it's like...
Yeah, but I guess you got to make that, didn't you?
No, I thought about it.
I was sick, didn't get to make, I think Courtney did.
She was the only one, she was the only one helping, to go.
Which was good, 'cause she, she learned, I'm sure she learned something down there. And then, November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, Thanksgiving, we close, so trash will be picked up on Friday, the twenty-ninth, okay, so we just...
Everybody always asks, but we always...
We'll pick it up, and then they go home and send it, or something.
Yes. That way, everybody's up to speed.
Hopefully. Well, that been said, now, I guess we'll go to Commies, down the floor, on one I know. Chris, and then we got Josh here, don't you?
Let's let Josh go first.
You want to go first?
Represent yourself, Josh.
And Josh. Building's fat.
So, I mean, he, 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 he'll answer questions, but he needs to be...
No, I think he needs to educate you before he, before I say anything. I've been trying to educate y'all, and I ain't got nowhere to get. But it's all funny to me, you want to sit down here, you ain't laugh.
No, I ain't laughing.
And if you cost my family some money, and I don't appreciate it one bit, I'll tell you that right now. And you can get me on record, you can flip your little camera, whatever you want to do.
Well, you've told us that before.
Well, I'm telling you that again, and this is about the last meeting I'm gonna be coming to. You got another project right behind you, they're building inspection on that permit right there?
Right now, no, I haven't seen it.
I didn't, I didn't, the question, the question was, they're building permit going up behind me, that's getting built right now, right down below the season. Yes or no?
No, I don't reckon.
That's what I thought. All right, what about right down here at the corner, down here Jeff from Rainland's old place, they're building inspection on that?
Are they doing it for work?
Yes or no? Yes or no? That's all I need to know.
And you're the one that come and get them, tell them, or you go before I would.
No, like I said last month...
All right, let me ask you another question, right in the middle of town, they did a remodel job, got the job done, and come and got a permit. How do you inspect something that's already been redone?
Who done the...
Which one?
I guess.
It don't matter, Doug, them knows as well as I know.
Talking about Joey's place there, the old city garage, I think Travis done the work on it.
And then, you got a city ordinance supposedly a modular home, they think none of these modular homes up pulled in here. A modular home's right there at the end of the four lane going out sixty-eight, actually a modular home. These right here, right here in front of me, and a modular home out down there in alley, but they did update them, they got block under them, too. What about right here on Schoolhouse Hill Road, they block under that, that city ordinance?
They had got to it, yeah, they were gonna change it up.
He's working with the inspector, I reckon, do what he needs to do.
Now, hold on, you ready? I mean...
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm, I'm letting y'all know.
Yeah, go ahead, pour it on.
So what, what you're trying to tell me is, if I was in Nichols or something like that, I cannot have a bill put in.
Listen, let me tell you this, and I'll say it in front of the camera, everybody.
You can say it, I want you to say it.
There's nothing going on here, the accusations need to stop. Now, I'm not, I'm not favoring anybody, and that, and that's all I'm gonna say, that's enough.
No, I don't, I don't think that, and I don't think we're gonna leave that alone, because I just don't believe that whatsoever.
Okay, you got about two more minutes, and then your time's up.
How, we got a time limit?
Yeah, we're gonna have time limit, well, you know, I could sit here and let you rant all night.
Well, you're...
I'll talk, I'll talk to person to person anytime, this is a city meeting, there's people here, this...
Right out of the meeting, then, right out of the meeting, we'll have to talk.
That's fine.
I'll sit down, now, let's let Mr. Holder stand there.
He's here to, he's here to talk to you about any questions that you got, or whatever.
No, I, I know my questions, I don't think you know your questions.
No, I know my que, I ain't got no questions.
Well, we don't know that, we haven't seen no permits.
You, you've got, the inspector, you asked us to get him here, if you've got questions, just...
That's Kate, you, it's not me, I know.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, Chris.
So, what do we need to ask Josh? I mean, we took him...
I don't need to ask Josh.
...this evening, so, what do we, what do you...
Well, I'll just say, several of the projects, we do have some permits on, I haven't done official inspections on them yet, 'cause I've been waiting on someone to let me know when they're ready to do those things, as is typical, you know, I'll get a call to say, "Come on up, we're ready for you."
And that's from the homeowner, correct?
Yeah, typically, or the contractor, whomever.
No.
Now, on the, on the permits that were purchased, there were, I believe, three double wides, we'll call them, that have come in recently, and we've got permits on all three, but I actually haven't received any calls to come up and officially, and, and now, most of that's a state thing, anyway, as I've mentioned to Chris, there are components that I'll that's a state thing anyway, as I've mentioned to Chris, there are components that I'll need to look at, like the porches, just make sure they got the HVAC hooked up, you know, and if we're enforcing the, this ain't the building code, but if we're enforcing the local ordinances, then, of course, there's the issue of the block underneath, and so, those are things that I would, I would be checking some things on behalf of just the standard building code that I'm state licensed to, to do, and then, some of those components aren't in that book, but they're in the local city ordinances that Duck Town has adopted, and so, little bit of a mix on double wides, modulars, single wides, but technically, those do fall under the state of Tennessee.
Sure.
From an installment standpoint, the strap downs, the installers have to be licensed and all, you know, and Sherwood's basically just handling some permits cells in that world.
Me and Chris right there, they hadn't blocked, they hadn't built their decks.
And just for clarification on renovations, those are case by case basis, renovations can be done, we do, you know, I do this job full time in Cleveland during the day, and same thing there is here, certain level, it depends upon the level and the scope of the work, which would determine whether a permit would be needed, and again, case by case basis.
Right, let me, let me ask you a question.
Swap out, swap out rock and for fresh, you know.
That's, that's where it's going, so if you're doing an interior, non-structural.
Yeah, for not changing load bearing walls.
Not changing load bearing walls and everything, or whatever, there's.
Open it up, put some rock.
Right, you, if you're.
You don't really need it typically.
You don't.
When we don't, yeah, if you're taking out some two by twelves and putting some back, that sort of thing, in the same place, replacing rock for good, putting down some fresh Evantec or OSB flooring, something like that. That normally doesn't warrant a permit, but if you go in, and this happens a lot with people, they'll go in with the intention of doing that, but while they're in there, Mamaw wants the, the load bearing wall removed and the big LVL put in, that needs a permit.
Right.
Um, that triggers a permit need, or let's blow out this back wall and put in a bigger bathroom, I want a soaker tub, you know, that's a permit.
The windows, doors.
Or the whole house is filled with tubes and knobs, and we're gonna swap it out for some fresh breakers, that's an electric permit through the state, to do that sort of change out, put in a new panel.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, I've been down to the pretense that is, if it's an interior, it's a remodel, or is long, on the outside, like painting, roofing.
Yeah.
Uh, anything, as long as you're not changing the footprint of the structure on the outside with a new deck.
And then not.
Or building, so if you're not changing anything load bearing.
Yeah.
There's no requirement for them to get a permit.
Right, within that scope, there's not a need for a permit, just, just to clarify those things, yes.
Thank you.
And that goes for commercial or residential?
Yeah, absolutely. And there, there's a few things on the commercial side that, um, any set of steps at all, even if there's just one, you gotta have handrails, for residential, you don't, there's, there's just little things that are different, um, that, commercial's just a little more sensitive to things, and so.
Because we have to do that, I think we're right.
But just, again, it might not even need a permit, it's just certain things that are supposed to be there.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, the only one that really comes to mind, far as the addition, is just from right down here, and it looks like lights are on, I guess, somebody in there, by the church.
Right.
I mean, still, I don't, I've never, I hadn't heard nothing from that guy, or Josh went by, but he hadn't seen anybody to talk to him or nothing like that, I just noticed lights on, I figured there was somebody living in it. I think I asked Alden, he thinks they are, they live right there by, but I don't know.
It, it looks like it.
I'd be scared to death to live in that, go sleep in that room they added on, I mean, that's what, and when they've done that addition, that would require a permit.
Yeah, yeah, any addition.
Coming outside, outside the footprint of the house.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna trigger the need for a permit.
That's one, I think you'd talk, that guy had a dress, and he said he didn't. So what do you do after the stuff is done? Like Chris says, it don't make sense.
If there's a concern about it being underbuilt, not meeting code, then, in all honesty, the, there's a process to basically do like a condemnation on the, you wouldn't condemn the whole house.
Right.
You would condemn the addition, and just basically say you can't reside in that section, and, and there would need to be reasons for that, you can't just willy nilly throw that around, but if there's evidence that it was built, uh, well, first off, there's a potential, like, I'm not familiar with this, so, there's a potential it was obviously built without a permit.
Where, where you built it?
But even beyond that, if it was underbuilt and not meeting code for wood size, span, things of that nature, then, then that would warrant the, guys, this ain't, this ain't strong enough to, to meet the minimums, and, you know, the codebook is minimums.
Because, you know, there was a wood deck there on four by four post, and basically, they built out over it and closed it.
And didn't cha, didn't change it?
It just don't look like what, the base on there don't look like it would hold, in my opinion, but I think he had to put some six by six post under it, somebody said, I hadn't even really paid no attention, but it'd be curious to look, and, because it basically, just, it don't look, you know, I don't know if it's attached to the, how, just original wall hangers from the deck, or how it was done, I don't know.
Maybe just a best.
But it, there's a lot of weight there, they probably added a bathroom, and I'd say maybe or something, be just guessing, I don't know, but it looks, I wouldn't want to stay into it, you know, it may be strong, but it, it don't look real good.
They've made several add-ons, ain't been no permits on it. It's built outside the footprint. Remodel, mine's a remodel, well, you won't believe it or not.
Does yours come, is, is your square footage on your house bigger than it was before?
It don't matter, I still got one model, you can ask anybody, it's a remodel.
You got one model.
And, and I got the four system.
The language of, the, the language of the permits are, like, two permits, one is new, and the other one encompasses everything else.
Is a remodel.
And it's addition alteration.
Sure.
It, it covers everything, yeah, so yours, Chris, would be an alteration of the original plus an addition, but it would fall under that, it's not a new permit, it's a, it's an addition that add alteration permit, that's what you got going on.
You're correct, but they've made several more, correct.
And, and what you're saying, Chris, is, there's been some potentially that were started
They ain't no potential, it's, it's the facts.
As alteration, but ended up with addition as well?
Exactly, they ain't, they ain't no, it's the facts.
Yeah, gotcha.
But here, I hear my daughter gets pointed out. What was the pointer's at when all that was going on? Matter of fact, two houses up from Doug, matter of fact, right there in front of the library. That's all I'm seeing. That's all I know.
Trying to think what you're talking about.
Burner's old house, right above Bob.
Yeah, and then this one down here.
Well, there's several of them. Brown Haven Homes, right over behind the head of high school. Built brand new houses over there, been any permits pulled on them?
They usually get.
They, they ain't no usually, are they or not? I mean, of course.
Brown Haven's home always calls me.
What about all that, I just got it on the way.
Chris, would you let me talk, please? Brown Haven Home always calls me and tells me what day they're coming in, and they get building permits before they do anything.
What about like, I can name off several that's been built over there, but why should I, whenever the finger got pulled into me? I don't like pulling fingers. That is not my intentions, but I don't like my family getting run over either. Especially my, my young.
When I started covering this job, and when Jeremy left, I think we were in the thirties for permit numbers, and we're in the eighties now, so, I mean, we have been issuing, we've issued over fifty in the, what, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, or whenever it was, I came here to start helping cover Jeremy's absence, when he asked if I would come up and entertain the idea, so, I mean, permits have been, and, and I've met with the Brown Haven guys, and Jacob Jacobs, and there's, there's multiple people who, that go through the process, Mr. Brown over here, in front of Chris's house.
Good guy.
Mitchell. Um, anyway, there, there's a lot getting, but there's potentially some that have been, you know, small additions and things have been missed as well, so, I mean, I, I don't know that to, I'm just, those things, those things can and do happen, they happen in, in Cleveland also, you know, and so it's potentially, if we know of any of those, it's a matter of, you know, what we need to do about the couple here and there that, that seem to be that way, but we probably do have a permit on many of them that, um, are, that seem to, if you look around and you see things going on, I'd be certain that we've got a permit on most of those.
Trying to figure, we're gonna come up with a web, so we know this stuff, because I didn't even know they were building until I looked there, I thought, "Oh my God, hope I got a permit, if not, I'm gonna," you know, and I understand, but I don't think they have, so we're gonna send them a letter, because he hadn't got it finished, I don't think it.
Who?
Down there below you. It ain't, it ain't my, I don't know, but I mean, it's just blocked up, looked like you just putting the rafter to it, I thought.
I mean, that's what, that's what I don't understand, you just point the finger at my daughter, but everybody around me, the city don't see that, but they seen system.
Well.
The city don't see this, it's right on the four lane, city don't see a lot of things, but they come over the hill and seen system.
Seen that one, he just asked if there's a permit, and we looked, and oh, he had it, and I don't even know, can't even remember the guy's name, but like you said, he said he didn't have to get one, so I mean, that's where we gotta come up with a system, something here in town where we can, and, and know, so Josh can know, because it ain't Josh's fault, he can inspect them.
Josh ain't, it ain't, it ain't Josh's job, Josh is the salesman, it's up to y'all to notify Josh.
Well, somebody got, we need to stand, somehow fix it, and even the guys without them, when Jeremy's with us.
It ain't, it ain't the city's job, it ain't got nothing to do with Mickey, Keith, or Wes, it'd be a little wreck.
Well, we'll probably end up in what it has to be, because I'm, we still have people here, to this Polk County, they don't require them, and we, there's people here in town that don't realize the city requires them.
Well, you can call the county, county, you know, you ain't got a half permit.
Yeah, but you do in the city, so we, we probably.
Somebody know it is, because I mean, that's what they told me.
Off you go to the races.
So we gotta get the word back out there more or less toward that, somehow, some way, I don't know what would we do to let the people know.
Maybe get the folks that whoever's answering them phone calls at Polk County Courthouse educated, that Duck Town and Copper Hill do have permits.
Yeah, and I think, didn't Jason send something here a while back with the information?
Yeah.
Or we, I mean, we somehow had together, so, yeah, Copper Hill got it too, and I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
A lot of them guys, they don't, I guess, probably the same thing, but they had to do something over there, because they was getting a lot of them little tiny shit, I mean, just, yeah, they were getting out of control, so I don't know, but the good thing, most of these companies we're talking about, I mean, you don't even have any problem with their stuff, really do, and really don't think they had any problem with Chris, did you? Yeah.
Chris was trying, he did a good job.
But that's what, so, but I understand what he's saying too, to y'all. So we just gotta educate the folks, I guess, because I'm sure there's people here that don't have a clue, and I think we've all been guilty of doing something, but I hadn't changed nothing on my house, but, of course, roof, we don't have to, had roof put on it, didn't even think about it, I mean, just forget about it, so, and I think the one up there, Burner's house, they tore the bathroom off, but I think they put it back in the same place, didn't they?
They tore several things out.
Yeah.
None of the plumbing and everything, that house done been sold, that house been sold twice, done upstairs again, right there, right down below you, right there.
It ain't going to.
I mean, it's sold, done been sold, been remodeled, the hand, I mean, ain't nothing been rotten back there so deep.
You talking about, like Dennis's old place?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but here you are pointing no sound. That's all I'm saying, I mean, I don't fire down, if I pay my taxes, I don't care to pay my taxes.
They missed when they first redone, well, they didn't change no, nothing on the Dennis.
Well, yeah, they built decks, added on, they did a lot of things there, yeah, oh yeah.
You get permits for decks, Josh, is that something, something I know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, you go look at that deck, you'll fall through the deck.
Oh, yeah, so.
Deck collapses are a big deal, so, yeah, we, we, we do, we do need to be, if you see somebody just putting on a brand new big deck or porch, and that's, that's a good one to let, let me know, let them know, and let me know, and we'll get together and come up and check that out, because that's that stuff where you end up having big gathering, and then stupid things come off the house and drop, and hurt a bunch of people. It's happened more than once, around here.
Jeremy ran into some trouble when we was having some of these houses with grants, the contractor, they just be able to put the decks, and he's like, "No," and, they ever done it, in Polk County, they won't hit it, and it took them a little while to figure out that.
The eighteen code count, with the nice deck sections, that, that is thorough and not overly, it's not overkill, it's solid, it's, it's, you can still build on some four by fours, but it pretty quickly elevates to six by sixes, the span gets a little bigger, um, you know, so it's just a matter of determining the length and width and all that, and then, but yeah, there's, there's good guidelines on that, that came out with that latest code addition that we adopted here, a lot better than the twelve, well, we were on nine here, but twelve, we were on twelve in Cleveland, terrible deck code, then the eighteen came out, it was a lot better.
Where are we on here?
We're all the eighteen, everybody is.
That's what I was thinking.
Cleveland, Duck Town, Copper Hill, we've all got the eighteen adopted right now.
So when Cleveland decides to adopt the new one, let us know, so we can stay.
Yeah, well, when we do ours, it'll be the time that the state law makes you do it, so I'll go ahead and have a conversation with y'all in Copper Hill, we'll just all do it together.
Make sure it's all done.
And it'll probably go into the twenty-four.
I hasn't got a problem with the building code. I think it's the best thing you ever come up with. I got a problem with the building code when everybody else ain't done the building code. That's the only thing I got a problem with. I don't care to pay my share, but that law ain't paying their share. I ain't got a problem whatsoever with Josh, even ones that's got away with it, I ain't got a problem with them, but don't point your fingers at me whenever you're doing something the same as I've done, that's the only thing I got a problem with.
And Josh says, you ask Chris to do anything that wasn't in the code?
No, he, it's code. Why would he sit there and cost me money if he didn't have to?
Right.
But the ones who didn't, ain't got the building permits, the ones cost me money, and they, they're still not got them, and they're still getting away with it. That's the only thing I'm saying.
They just get away from us.
I mean, that's the only thing I got a problem with.
Because if we hadn't have told you or got you to do a permit.
I wanted another permit.
And to do with.
And the house has been fired.
Yeah. That's all I can figure, and we're just gonna get, we all ride around, I guess, we see something, try to figure, and it's just like Brendan and her husband, the belders, I know that garage is probably great, but in the meantime, I just looked up and checked on the house, that's the mother hall, so I'm gonna get her to send them a letter, let them know they need a permit, it's not finished yet, so, but it's just basically attached garage, out behind the house there, but pretty good size, all block, so.
Yes, yeah, I wouldn't do, I don't really do block CMU, I don't fall under standard code, it's actually in chapter seventeen for special inspections, but, um, I, I do check, when you do a block building, you throw a top plate on it, you do roof, roof attachments, I'm checking all those wood attachments, checking bearings, hurricane clips, that kind of stuff, so there, there's a, there's a blend there of.
That's, that's what it looks like, I hadn't been down there, I just noticed it.
There's block sections for foundation, but not when they're like vertical walls, that are just like four walls, not subterranean, the, the block sections of the code really get more into.
And you would necessarily check field and basements. Check the footer before they started.
Yeah, yeah, footings, yeah, absolutely.
Too late for that.
Check footings, and then, they'd just do the block, but there wouldn't really be a lot to look at there.
Could you say that again, a little louder? Little bit too late for that. Right, I mean, yeah, and that, that's what Chris is calling it, I mean.
I'm just saying it's too late to go get a permit after you've already got it done, so to speak. I haven't got a problem with y'all doing the building permits whatsoever, but I got the problem, the ones that point the fingers at me, that ain't got the building permits.
And you think back about that, we had building permits, you knew it when we started the house, but you about had that baby dried in, and.
I did have a.
We don't have a permit ever.
But listen though, let me tell you another case, twenty twenty.
Right.
But let me, let me ask you something, Josh, tell them what you did while I was in the process of building it.
Stopped you?
No.
Oh, okay.
You come by and looked at it, nobody knew, nobody knew you stopped?
You wouldn't be sick, Chris.
Without, I didn't have no building permits, you come over there and looked at it.
Yeah, I gave it a look over and checked it to the code.
And, and nobody stopped me then.
Right.
Yeah, we went ahead and kind of saw where he was at.
Nobody stopped him, and he didn't have a building permit.
I want to make sure when the.
But the ones kept yakking, yakking, is the one that had to come up here and get the permits.
I think that's probably why Josh went by there to look, let you know she.
He didn't let me know, no, 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 no. They wasn't got nothing wrong with the building when he come.
I don't, I'm, I was saying, I don't figure it was, it was way under construction before a building permit was even bought.
What does it matter?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so you, you, in a roundabout way, guilty same as the rest of these, but, but we got you took care of.
No, I wouldn't be guilty. How, how am I guilty when everybody else around me ain't even got a permit?
Well, they got them, don't they? Except for the garage.
What about Dennis's old house, want the building permit back twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen, six, twenty-eleven?
Yeah, but it was, they didn't do outside the footprint, I guess, that would've been considered a.
What about decks built on it, five inches gaps?
That's a different story there.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing, was you had on a building deck? Huh, well, of course, I mean, it is. What's the difference?
So, what do we need to, what do we need to do, Chris, to help your, make you happy, I mean, I'm just trying to.
I'm gonna talk to James, he, he had enough respect, tell me that out of the meeting, I ain't got a problem talking to him and that. I ain't got a bit of problem talking to any of them.
No, and we.
I'm, I'm as straight up as day you are.
Yeah, we talked about it.
But, but don't talk. Do not talk my young money, I wouldn't pick on your kids. And never pick on anybody's kids.
I mean, I don't think it was picking.
Yeah, I think so, because, I mean, there are a lot of buildings going around me. Nobody's ever investigated, nobody just know this, and even let, let a trailer, city ordinance put metal under a trailer in May here in July, and told James, I don't think I let them do that. What happened? Metal went under the trailer.
I was sitting there just like you, I seen, I'm like, man, I don't think that's supposed to happen until I found it and, and dug it up.
You knew, you knew it that night, and you knew it in August, you knew it except for. You knew it last.
They told it to everybody else, and they all done it except for this guy, and he jumped one up above it.
And he did it right?
I don't know why he didn't wanna do that right.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know. I know he rented them, so he probably tried to get income as cheap as possible.
That's fine, I ain't got a problem with him renting. I ain't got a problem, nobody does nothing. The problem I got is when they picked on my kids. That's the only problem I got.
I wouldn't, you know, you kid, it just, you know, we did have building permits, and I guess yours should, that, that thing, that's a lot of house.
It don't matter how much houses I.
They just do that.
Before I got a permit, he didn't, he didn't tell me nothing, and the house was in progress.
Right.
The house has been built right from the get-go.
The first visit I made was under the premise that they was working without a permit. I went to investigate.
Yeah, but you didn't notify me to tell me to get one?
Think I notified Cheryl to let her know that what I found was a house that definitely warranted the need for a permit.
So you're saying all these other ones didn't?
Why didn't they investigate those? I came to look at yours.
Is that? You said it right there. Why didn't they investigate them?
To look at yours, I only had one to look at that day.
It don't matter. You said it all right there when you said that. Mine. Other ones in progress, just like mine. Thinking about it.
We do sometime when you're up, get you just to look at that, just as a glance, for sure, 'cause I, I, I don't feel comfortable, I don't know a whole lot about a building, but, but that, that don't look. Yeah.
The visit to look at, the visit to look at Chris's isn't the only time I've ever done that either, y'all have had me up to do that on other occasions, or whatever. There was that one at the three-way stop, right there at School House, and Main Street there in Buzzard Tree, that one on that, there was one there that that pasture was on, you know, prior to, and I, I went and looked at it, and went up under it, looked, found that, anyway, there's been, there's been a handful that I've done that over the years, got those calls to come up and check one off where y'all did let me know something was going on, and they didn't have a permit, needed to see kind of what, what the evidence was, but it doesn't happen often, but there's a few over the years in general.
And then, Lexis, and I, I'd like to say, I don't wanna put it on the boys, but the boys that wanted to ride around here every day, they pick up garbage every day, so they do see stuff going on. Lot better than I do, I mean, I don't get out and ride the back road and everything, and like over, where you talking about behind the hospital, all that up in there, I hadn't been back in there in, I don't know how long, except they built houses to dish, I don't even have, I don't even know what's.
I feel like I've gotten all those.
Right.
I don't think there's been one built in there, I haven't looked at it.
Right, but I'm just saying, if they done an addition, I don't.
In the woods.
I mean, I wouldn't be able to say I could get a permit because I don't know what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The boys are working for the city, 'cause they don't know nothing about building.
Well, they don't have to know nothing about building, but.
Well, not, I mean, well, we know that's right. We know that's right, you ain't gotta know a whole lot about nothing in the city, unless you're the right, you're the right, or you're the right one, you ain't.
Just be the eyes to, they saw something.
That's what I'm saying, that's all, I'm telling the inspector, but if they see something going on, say, hey, they, I mean, could need to let Cheryl, or even me, or James, or Mike know. Or as that goes, that's not that, I'm not asking them to inspect it, but they're on every inch of this road every day somewhere, so, I mean, if they see something, I just, 'cause we gotta, that's how we're doing, we're missing it because we're not, nobody on the ground to see this stuff, so that's, that, I guess that's what we need to do more than anything, and you.
Yeah, you gotta set eyes.
Get somehow, some way. So what do we need to do from here on out, Chris? I mean, what do you, what do you want us to do? I mean, we know we're, we're dying Dutch inspecting all that stuff, that part, it's not final, I reckon, but, but it. What can we do to help you?
I'll, I'll give her some kickback.
Or you mean money?
Yeah.
How much, how much was a permit?
Over five hundred dollars.
'Cause the law will be a front, so I can't keep everybody's.
Everybody can swear a hundred, whatever, so, yeah. I don't know, what are you? What's your opinion for is, I mean, I don't.
We got codes in place, and permits are permits. I know you'd like to have it, but, I mean, you, you can't, we can't give you money back on a permit unless we give other people back, we gotta treat everybody the same.
You're right.
That's my opinion.
That's what he's saying.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying, that's my opinion.
You're right, you said it all right there. You got codes in place. Just think about what you just said.
I know what I said.
So, I get code, nobody else gets code.
There's a lot of other people get, I know you think you're the only one, Chris, but you're not.
I'm seeing a lot around me.
There's been fifty in the last five years.
I, I'm not, I'm not arguing it, I'm not, I'm not arguing that whatsoever with you, whatsoever. I'm not arguing that with you whatsoever. I'm just saying, there are a lot of buildings went around me when nobody got code, but Reagan, even in this, when I started that project, with the one right up the road there, we got an add-on build on and everything.
Let me ask you something, Chris. A while ago, you was talking about Josh coming by, and you didn't, he didn't talk to you, but he'd come by, and you didn't know he was there, whatever, and, but he didn't say nothing to you. You, you were sort of complaining about that, had you rather him come up and assist you. We're trying, we, we, we have codes, we try to make sure that everybody is in compliance, we try to treat everybody fair, that's what I try to do. And I understand what happened to you, but we try to catch as many as we can, yeah, there needs to be some kind of system that's put into place, we need somebody, whether it's the boys, whether it's the workers, or somebody's appointed, there is, there is a position that's supposed to oversee that, that does notify Josh every time if somebody does, or Josh is not supposed to actually have to do that, there's somebody supposed to go out, and when somebody's doing something, then get a letter and says, you're, you're building something that, that requires a permit, and that's what should happen, I agree with you. So there is a system that needs to go in place or whatever, but on the other side of it, going back, hashing up everything for the last ten years, ain't gonna change a thing, you gotta move forward. Yeah, things wasn't done properly. But what, there's nothing you can do about it now.
What if, we get.
I mean, that's, that's all I would say.
We get tax, we got everybody's address here in town, whether they live or not, to their own property, before they get a tax bill.
Send it out again.
That may be the, to send out everybody a letter.
Send them out before, send them out again, no, find everybody to remind them.
That there is a. Yeah, I mean, and you can't do it all certified mail, of course, you know, but, but they all get it, whether, and they may some, they say, oh, I never got anything, but they do.
Send it, send it out with the tax notices. Send it out and have them put it within.
Well, we've done, got the taxes out.
I know, pay my.
Send it out letters in.
I see you can drop the board, but that's probably not something, I mean, like with the garbage, that's all, the handout, but probably the one doing that, handout to permit, if it's mailed to them, at least we, we know.
But, I mean, that's all you can do, notify them again, that's about the third, fourth time, probably.
How many houses we got in the city, reckon?
All right, about two hundred, hundred and eighty.
Really, I figured might have a little more than that, I didn't know.
Well, since Highland Woods grown, probably, probably over two twenty-two.
There's a few, and then gain a few. And like the one we were talking about, Mr. Waters there, as you go up to the housing, they didn't change nothing on that one, I don't think, interior siding.
They build on?
Include that, there's a porch, enclosed porch on the back of that.
They build on?
Didn't they just redo that?
No, they closed all that in.
It was in.
All they done was just like this guy done right here.
I'm thinking, oh, man, I think it always had it enclosed area back there, 'cause I went up there once, when Jack calling them was overseeing it, renting it, and it electric was bad in that section, and there was a reason, because it was basically a porch.
I never got nothing to do with Josh.
No, but I'm just saying, that, so that's been enclosed, I, I, they didn't change anything for the structure of the house, that I can remember. Put siding on it, don't have to have a permit for siding?
No.
Josh?
Yeah, roofing?
No.
The one time we get into roofs sending a permit is when the value of the roof goes over twenty-five thousand. Which ain't gonna be a residential roof.
See, I don't, I don't have that kind of roof, then again, I don't know.
Jason, that did the, uh, School House up here, he got a permit for the roof. He, he replaced him with roof on the Duck Town School. Building, and he got a permit, 'cause it was a lot. And then I, I went up on it, and I was up on the roof about a month ago, looking at everything with him. And he needed me to look at it for some of the work he did for Grants, is what I needed, kind of set eyes on that, so I read him the narrative.
I bet they've been woody. Like Grant.
Five hundred.
Making some improvements on the exterior, redoing the brick, just stabilizing the grout, and that sort of thing.
Yep.
Beautiful school.
So. No, Josh ain't said nothing, we ain't said nothing to change your mind, but what, what do we need to do, Chris? Love you to death, son, I don't wanna let this, I'm saying, I don't know what to. We don't wanna have to do this every month, I guess, of what we're.
I don't like doing that.
No, I know, and that's what I'm saying, I don't know, I mean, we're trying to, trying to make it better, I know the past is past, but I don't.
If you were so concerned, I pulled a trailer out in, in July, about to metal on the ground. City ordinance, I mean, anybody knows that city ordinance.
And we looked it up and told them about it, they know it.
All right, so how they renting it? So, wouldn't that be one of them, wouldn't that be one of them things, like, all right, how you renting it?
Yeah, that's Mr. Whatever.
I ain't got a problem with the guy who's on it. Where's the city at, where's the city at in that, when it's a city ordinance? No different than me with the, with the permit.
Well, I mean, and he knows it because, and he started down here.
That's all I'm saying.
So he got it fixed, I don't know, I hope he makes it over to change it, 'cause that's what he's gonna have to do.
But how they even get ready to begin with, with it not right with city ordinance?
A lot of thing they done it, about how long?
It don't matter how long they did it.
Yeah.
It don't matter how long they did it.
Well, I'm not a building inspector.
I'm just saying.
Same thing, you could've went over and yelled at him as much as I could.
What, it ain't my place to yell at. I'm not, I'm not in this road. I'm not up here in this road right here. I'm not in Josh's road. Which I ain't saying, it's Josh's role to go tell them either, it's up to y'all, and then Josh goes.
Well, I reckon they talked to you, and you, I reckon you got them straightened out, right?
Yeah, it's been handled, I mean, he knows.
Or that he knows, so.
Last, I understand that you're waiting on them to notify you back. When they're ready.
They do.
They're renting it, so it's ready.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that they got. But, well, they gotta change, they gotta change it or whatever, that he has to look at and inspect. That's, you can't inspect it till it's.
Okay, so when, when's the city gonna step in, make them do it?
How do they know to change it if it ain't been inspected? I mean, how do you know what to change? I mean, the block's one thing, we're talking about the decks and stuff, 'cause they done built all their decks on all these and everything.
He's already discussed all that with?
Have you checked them? See, but he ain't checked them.
Okay.
But they done built before he got the permit.
I understand that.
So that's.
Well, I don't mean nothing, 'cause I done built too. I mean, that don't mean nothing, 'cause you build a deck, but you're taking a chance by building. If he comes up, when you do get a permit, says, look, you need a two-by-twelve, you got two baits. Guess what, you done wasted two thousand dollars in two baits, when you needed two-by-twelve. I'm just saying, when is the city gonna make them go over here, over the hill, right above Sissy, like the city made me do, and step in on the city ordinance to get that done? It doesn't mean making money. You costing her money, he's making money.
Well, I guess, if he gets, when he makes enough rent to pay the trailer off, yeah, then he's making money, right now, he's probably just making his paper.
It don't matter, he's making his paper.
Well, but.
They, they did buy permits, so they have money than that, just have to call for an inspection.
So how long did you give them before they, well, you can't really, well, I know, I've seen stuff in Cleveland, start something, sit there, I've rechecked it for years. Finally just start putting a bite of the press on it, when they realize they have.
The permit says a hundred and eighty days with inactivity.
Right.
It can go dormant.
Right.
Which is six months.
Which from your side, that, one of the, from my side.
Being a modular, double-wide, single-wide, being a, a state structure, you don't really have to have decks, as long as you got just a set of stairs going into the door.
Did you actually have that?
So the point is, like, they can be occupied without, they can, they can go through their full compliance and get occupancy and, and be able to use it without my involvement, just simply because of the way that they don't have to go through us for that type of structure, it's not a state-built code, code structure.
You're right, but the city ordinance.
Yeah.
That's when the city steps in. Not, not do, not do with you. And that got nothing to do with you, that's when the city steps in.
And that's like the skirting, things of that nature. The appearance ordinance that it was identified under, like we found, when we were looking in there. But that's not structural block, it's just an appearance.
It is, yeah.
Appears themselves, or what, and the straps and the tie-downs, that gets part of that status.
That's, 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 that's sturdy, but.
Yeah, it's just looks.
I don't know, we think, what, what can we do? What you do, because they forget if I'm gonna house. Well, I don't know, but with any, everything being said, I do wanna think, you know, the election's over. Mike's not gonna be with us at this capacity next month, or whatever, but I definitely appreciate him doing what he can here for the city, and, and working, and cares about town, and hopefully he'll still be around, help us around, or whatever, I know he'll have to do anything if he can, so, but somehow, some way. I mean, I do really appreciate you helping out in town, Mike. 'Cause if this vibe broke, it could've been you, or it could've been me.
We need to put Mike over, we need to put Mike and city manager over the, the build off. Nobody else can see it, maybe he can.
Get back my old truck. They won't let you retire.
He ain't, he ain't got been, he ain't, he ain't got been on that every day.
Look, they been working pretty much every day. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm back on the table.
Oh, are you?
Good.
Okay.
Mike needs to roll over that.
Then I do. And Chris gonna talk afterward?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Nothing else, we're.
Unless somebody else in the public's got something. And I, I do wanna say thank you, Mike, for your service.
For sure, I, I appreciate it, I have enjoyed the last four years.
And then, which, you told him about where Christopher's dinner is?
Yeah, I'll mention it, but anyway, it's Friday the third, think, the December, so at December's, December's meeting, I will announce.
What it is, but, and that you still come, still just go on the planning commission up, unless you change your mind on the housing. So you're still.
Every house.
Six.
Six, yep.
They're trying to work on everything, they've got, everything should be able to do. And they need to go over to the hospital and get that. They're sending close, like, thanks. And you go do that.
I'll start calling Dick. Dwayne and I was talking about wanting to go over there, so we made like the, next week, I'll love us, go get everything and bring it over.
They may have to be re-wearied, and put some lights on them somehow, but, but that's, yeah, that's what I forgot, that's the one they used to put down at the front of the hospital.
Yeah.
See, it's a big set.
We, we discussed it, so we thought we'd go next week, I'll love us, and help bring stuff and get it ready. We, we discussed it, so we thought we'd go next week, all of us and help bring stuff and get it ready so we can get full swing on that, so. Who sent things on the motion to adjourn?
He made it, I guess I said it, he had it with you.